Good evening. Welcome to the August 5th, 2024 meeting of the Stillwater City Council. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask that you all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You guys have been watching the Olympics as much as I have, you kind of want the flag to go up and play an anthem or something while we're sitting here. If we have any gold medals or anything we can give out. All right. First up on the agenda is our consent docket. Councillors, questions, comments, or action on the consent docket?
I move approval of consent.
Second?
Motion and second to approve the consent docket. Please vote. Consent's approved with a vote of five to zero. Item 6A, receive Henderson Golf Management fiscal year 24 update and consider approval of a fiscal year 25 operation and maintenance agreement for Lakeside Memorial Golf Course. Kristi, you going to kick this one off?
Kick away.
So we'll have an update from Michael Henderson from Henderson Golf Management. Then I'm happy to step back up with a recommendation and to discuss the agreement if there are any questions.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michael Henderson. I am the principal at Henderson Golf Management. I have operated Lakeside Golf Course since 2010, seven years as a city employee and the last however many that's been, seven, six years as an independent contractor. Henderson Golf Management, we have companies continuing to grow. We do almost everything in the golf industry that you can do from, we own golf courses to total facility management, monthly management, agronomy plans, facility renovations, business development, and just as needed consulting. We currently have worked with many golf courses in the community, Guthrie, Cushing, Perry, Edmund, all the way down to Dallas. We, this past year, have still kept up with our community programming and we are still the home of the Stillwater Public Schools that we share with Stillwater Country Club with them coming out to practice at our facility. We operate the Stillwater Junior Golf Program, which we've done since 2010, and it's been nice that we've had 14 years now to watch the progression as these boys have and girls have gone through the program and we have quite the team at Stillwater High School now, which is very, very nice. We couldn't be more proud of what they do. We've been the host of the OSU Golf Camp two out of the last four years as well, and we also hold several South Central PGA events, including the Stillwater Junior Golf Championship, which was just conducted last month. We have three teaching staffs on professional, I mean, three teaching professionals on staff, which perform also ladies' clinics, and we also donate carts for the Boomer Blast yearly whenever needed by the city. We, this past year, we've made a few capital improvements to the program. We've purchased new green mowers. We replumb the golf course bathrooms in between holes. That would be a 16 and 17 tee box. We've installed three new air conditioning units and then we've had recent winter kill over the last three or four years, which we've pretty much put the golf course back together now. So the city gave us some funding to help us get started. We've completed the project, so right now we've had a really nice weather pattern over the last 12 months. So the golf course is in as good a shape as we've seen it for the last 14 years. Program attendance continues to rise. This past year, we did, went from 31,000 paid rounds to 33,000 rounds. When you add in the use of the practice facility, all of the community programming we do, so total usage is in that 40,000 to 50,000 person area. We can't gauge a lot of it because a lot of it doesn't have a cost associated with it, so it's hard for us to track, but our paid rounds did go up $2,000. We had a really nice program with the OSU, our college membership program, which we think helped that as well, and we couldn't be more pleased of where we're going. We had, with that, our revenues continue to grow. We went from 2021, we grossed $840,000 with, had about a 13% jump in 2022 to $953,000, and we had another 14% jump this past year, and we broke a million dollars gross for the first time since I've been involved with the program in 14 years. So COVID helped a lot, got a lot of new players out there. We had a lot of new demographics from women, kids, and it wasn't just the normal guys out there playing golf. We were kind of waiting to see nationally if we were going to have some sort of hangover from COVID and we were going to see these numbers drop, but we haven't seen it yet. It's still continuing to rise, so hopefully this is a good indicator for the golf as a whole, that it's going to continue to grow, and we couldn't be happier. With that threshold, we broke the million dollar threshold. We have an agreement that we split revenues after $900,000 with the city, so we were able to provide back almost $10,000 in split revenue this year with the city to help with the subsidy the city already provides us. We, as we continue to grow with these revenues, we also continue to spend more money. We have a formula that we keep just to make sure that as the money's coming in, we spend X amount of dollars of it to make sure that the golf course is viable, we don't run out of money, but also we're reinvesting back into the golf course through improvements, through employees. Last year, we employed 46 individuals, so we had 46 employees that worked for us last year, and yeah, it just couldn't be going any better. We did increase rates August 1st. We increased by $5. This $5 rate increase still puts us between $4 to $7 below the surrounding similar sized municipalities such as Lew Wentz Golf Course. I can't remember the other golf courses we used to base it off of, but all of these sub 100,000 person municipal golf courses were still $5 to $6 below that, but with the rising costs through COVID, through inflation, our chemical and fertilizer applications have increased almost 80%. All of our mechanical, as all you guys already know, it's just, everything's just getting more and more expensive. So we did have to increase that, but we gave plenty of notice and we're still far below market value for the golf course.
So what is the cost per round now?
It is $30 during the week and $35 on the weekend, and that includes tax and that includes a golf cart. We still have a walking fee, which is $10 less, but majority of the people ride when they do come out. And we are at the end of our cart lease, so in the next year to 18 months, we will be investing in new golf carts, which will bring 60 new carts in, which will be about a $750,000, $850,000 investment that we'll bring in in the next 18 months. Right now, we're kind of turning over our maintenance agreement, so we go maintenance, golf carts, maintenance, golf carts, is that's the way how we do it. Does anybody have any questions or anything else I didn't answer?
Councillors, anything further?
How many of those employees are full-time? Ballpark?
Oh, I would say we have, that'd be a Riley question. 14? Okay, 25 full-time.
Are you seeing any trends in the municipal golf industry in terms of usage of courses? You're seeing, I mean, players overall in golf seems to be up.
It's at an all-time high right now, which is funny because the PGA Tour is split up with warring factions and everything on TV, the TV numbers are down and everything would tell you that golf shouldn't be growing the way it is, but it has. And it just, it goes back to COVID. I think those couple of years where everybody got stuck indoors, they had to go outside. We had to have a new generation of player coming along, and we're just seeing different demographics across the board from just youth to females to groups we didn't see before. They would come out infrequently, but now we're seeing it on a daily basis that we're out there all the time. Our growth with the OSU campus and the community, the students there has been remarkable as well. We had annual memberships, but we broke them up into semesters, fall, spring, summer. That helped a lot. And yeah, so we're juggling with all the kids, but we also have to take care of the locals as well, and that's always the most difficult part of sharing the golf course with the entire community, and so, so yeah, it's been.
Do you guys take on more with Carson being closed?
You know, that's, I don't think so. I don't. I think that's a different price point for most people. It definitely doesn't hurt. You know, we got the OSU Golf Camp this year, which brought in some additional revenue for us as well. We see a lot of the kids that are coming in. Stillwater Country Club's doing very well. I know the Wings across the street not so well, but we've been able to take advantage of that with our better course conditioning. We have better golf carts. We have the ability to sell beer and liquor if we don't, we don't choose not to serve liquor, but we could if we wanted to. And yeah, it's growing. So we're just waiting to see. We're waiting to see if there's going to be a hangover from COVID and it starts to drop, but all indications right now is it's not, it's staying, staying flat. And so hopefully with another 14 to 13% jump next year, we'll be kind of in that 1.3 range if we have a good weather pattern, and yeah, we're excited.
Does the high school play for free? Do you charge them?
No, we do not charge them.
Right answer.
We try. We had, we've had all kinds of junior programs where at one point we were letting kids, all kids play for free. That got a little out of control there for a while, so we had to kind of rein that back a little bit. But we still have a hardship program in place that if any child comes to us and they don't have the means to play, we will provide them with clubs and have a ability to let them go out there. And we have a few kids that have taken advantage of that over the years, not many, but every once in a while, we will find a hard luck case that needs a little handout and we love it. It's just a great place for them to be, safe place for them to be, learning life skills and just a great game.
Good for you.
Well, as you know, when, when conditions are less than favorable at the golf course, we hear about it, and I've actually been hearing great things, not hearing about problems really.
I would love to take credit for that, but it's really weather patterns. We have had the same program in place for over 14 years. We do the same thing. We have to ramp it up some years, some years we don't. It just really, mother nature has everything to do with that, and we've just been in a good growing season these last nine months.
Good. All right. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you very much.
I'm happy to answer any questions or try to, or I have a recommended motion.
Councillors, any questions about the, this is about the new contract for the coming year, right?
Correct.
This is a one-year renewable for up to three?
Yes.
Same numbers?
Yes.
Questions, comments? Recommended, what's your recommendation?
Motion to approve agreement for the maintenance and operation of Lakeside Memorial Golf Course with Henderson Golf Management.
Councillors?
Motion to accept staff recommendations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the recommendation. Please vote. It's approved with a vote of five to zero. Looking forward to seeing lots more people out of the golf course. Appreciate your work out there. That takes us to 6B, which is to approve amendment number one on the CEMAR agreement out at the airport, and Kelly Reed's going to come up and talk to us a little bit more about this one.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Let me get this up here. Okay, I'm up here tonight to tell you a little bit more about the terminal project and make sure that everybody's up to speed on where we're at on the project and have a recommendation for you to move forward with our CEMAR. So I believe a year ago, there was some terminal artist renditions provided, and I wanted to go through those, and we have a couple of extras as well, let you know where we're at and that we are ready, pretty much ready to move forward. So the existing terminal you see here was built in 1952, and the air traffic control add-on was a few years later. When we initially looked at this project, it was a combined project to relocate the air traffic control tower and build out the existing terminal. That was deemed not feasible because of the condition of the existing terminal, so the plan separated out into two projects. We're moving forward first with the terminal, then with relocation of the tower. So this is a layout of the existing terminal. The orange that you see there is the main facility that was built in 1952. The extra colors are add-ons that we've completed over many number of years, the most recent being the yellow and the blue corridors to add-on space for TSA screening and the hold room to support commercial air service. We have a little over 7,000 square feet in this terminal building, which is insufficient when we have a full flight. Our current aircraft right now holds 65 passengers, and we are at standing room only when we have a full flight, which we have often. So this is the new terminal. This is a view from, looking from north to the south. The new terminal is a little over 31,000 square feet and meets our current need as outlined in our master plan, draft master plan, and also allows for future development. So in the new, the existing terminal, we only have one gate, and the new terminal, we will have two gates, so we can support current needs and transition to potential hopeful growth in the future. This is the north side of the terminal building. You can see outbound baggage claim there with the brown facility. You can see a passenger boarding bridge, which is part of our goal. The Terminal Vision Committee identified several things early on in the planning of this that they would like to see in the terminal. We want the terminal to be very inclusive, very welcoming, and accessible to persons of any ability or access level, and a passenger boarding bridge is really key to that, to avoid that ground boarding that we do now. This is looking at the terminal from the apron, or what we call the ramp. You can see gate one there to the left and gate two is to the right. That does not have the passenger boarding bridge. It can be added in the future, but that far right side is what we're calling the charter lounge, and I have a photo of that at the end to show you. And then the other corner of the building here, the southwest corner, that's the inbound baggage claim, and also that charter lounge on the corner. When we were designing the terminal, there was a lot of, a lot of different components that came into it. We want it to have an aviation feel. Some of the wing, the roof of the terminal is designed to look like winglets on an aircraft, but we really want it to have a Stillwater feel. So we worked closely with the Vision Committee to identify what is that? What message do we want to send to people visiting Stillwater? How do we want to welcome them? We want to have a red dirt feel from this area. We want to have a lot of Native American influence, City of Stillwater influence, and of course, a lot of OSU pop, a lot of bright orange, which I personally love. So you'll see those themes and colors throughout the terminal. So this is the main entryway, the lobby. When you walk into the terminal, you can see over to the right, there's a vintage photo that was actually taken locally in Stillwater, so we're going through our archived photos to, to display a representation of Stillwater's history to aviation here. The airline ticketing counters that you see there, there are two, so there's two, space for two airlines. In our existing terminal, we only have space for one, so this allows us to add on a second carrier when we can attract one. Down the corridor there, you see some noise, some sound panels to reduce noise, make the terminal a little quieter, and those have a kind of an orange into turquoise and blue fade to represent colors of the sunset. This is what we call the hold room or the sterile area, so this is where passengers wait for their flight after they've completed TSA screening. Gate one is over there to the far right, and gate two would be over to the left. But very open, airy, we want people to be able to watch aircraft operations, aircraft taking off and landing, see the commercial aircraft, see the students conducting flight training activity here, and really get to be a part of the airport environment.
Will gate one be the one that's primarily used to start with?
Correct. When and if the passenger boarding bridge is out of service, we can utilize gate two as a backup, which is not uncommon once we get a passenger boarding bridge, but infrequent. Baggage claim here is depicted in the full layout that we are hopeful to get. We've applied for a competitive ATP grant again for fiscal year 25. In fiscal year 24, we were successful in getting some funds towards the terminal. If we are successful enough in our new application for next year, then we'll get that full package that we see. If we aren't, then we'll have an abbreviated version that has baggage slides as opposed to the full conveyor system. And then in the back, you can see three desks for rental car spaces. Stillwater Regional Airport does offer three rental car companies, so we want to make sure all three have office space. Currently, only one has office space. And then immediately behind that baggage claim area is the charter lounge, so this is adjacent or opposite corner of the building to gate one. This can, this will be used heavily by OSU Athletics. Their charter flights come in and out of Stillwater Regional Airport currently in the existing terminal, and this gives much more space, much more room, better separation for passengers and players flying on those charter flights from the other traveling public, and it can also be used as a training room, a conference room, and provide rentable space to the aircraft as a revenue generator when it's not being used as a charter lounge. So a little bit of the layout to let you visualize, you can see with the orange arrow there, that's the placement for the new terminal. That's hangar one currently. Hangar one has been slated in former master plan versions for demolition because of its age, poor condition, it's been poorly maintained. You can see the existing terminal to the left of that with the blue arrow, and then this is really an aerial of our current parking. So with the terminal, we are very hopeful to have a much more broadened parking opportunity, parking closer to the terminal. So here again, you can see different view, but you can see the new terminal in orange, existing terminal to the left with the blue arrow. Depending on the success of our ATP grant requests for this year and additional grant funding that we're pursuing, we're hopeful to have that smaller triangular lot and the bigger lot both funded. The goal is to open the terminal by August of 2026, and depending on funding, we'll see how much of that parking we can have open and available by the time we open. So our CEMAR, our construction manager at risk, is helping us manage the entirety of this project. They've been doing a great job so far. They came in well under budget for our projections for the terminal, which is very exciting, over a million dollar savings already as we proceed to move forward with construction. So I've got a timeline here that really shows, I'll just kind of paraphrase, we started planning this project really several years ago, looking at getting air service here, strengthening the service, making sure that we have consistency and strong-rooted commercial air service. Now that we've proven that, a couple of years ago, we started talking to the FAA about this project. The CEMAR was selected last fall. Construction bids came in in April, and we've been working with them on that process, and our hope is to begin construction towards the latter half of this month. And again, with new terminal opening, hopefully August of 2026. And then this is just a summary of the phase one funding. So phase one on this project is the terminal itself, the four lane drop-off in front of the terminal, and the improvements to the existing terminal parking lot. So we also have to look at shifting over our access road, adding in a roundabout to allow southbound travelers to safely access the airport, and additional things like the passenger boarding bridge, baggage handling system, furniture fixture and equipment, but for just what we're moving forward with in phase one, this is our breakdown of federal grants, state grants, and local funds. So our recommendation is to approve amendment number one to the CEMAR agreement, converting from the interim guaranteed maximum price to the guaranteed maximum price. Also approve the city manager to execute this amendment and approve all bonds and releases of applicable grant funds, and lastly, to approve the associated budget amendments. Are there any questions about the terminal or process?
Councillors, any questions?
Hangar one, is it going to be torn down?
Correct.
When is that going to happen?
That happens first. One of the first things to happen after construction fencing goes up.
Have they relocated out of that over to the next hangar? Have they relocated out of that?
Yes, yes.
And just to repeat, the guaranteed maximum price actually came in lower than the interim.
Correct. Our CEMAR has done a fantastic job helping us realize cost savings where we can, and we're very happy with their support thus far.
And I think it's also worth noting that over 14 million of this is coming from federal and state grants, so I think, I think that's a, that's a huge win as well.
And that's in phase one?
It's a little over 13 million in phase one.
Yes.
For the project total, it's much more.
And how far does phase one get this building?
We'll see multiple years of construction on the building and the four lane drop-off. It'll take well over a year to complete all of that, but phase one is, is everything related to the physical terminal building, that four lane drop-off, and first up really is the demolition and then improvements to the existing terminal parking lot, so we can continue to have charter buses come through the flow and allow passenger access while we construct the terminal.
But it doesn't include relocation of the tower, that's all phase two?
That's after this project. It's a different project.
Hadn't thought about that. Will the tower still be there?
Correct.
So it'll, you're going to tear down around it then?
We're not tearing down the existing hangar, or terminal, rather. When, when that tower does come down, some of the building may need to come down, but we don't have an engineer's estimate of that yet.
Okay.
And then when do we, when do we expect to know about the next round of grant funding?
Awards are released in September. Funds come in October of this year.
And that'll, that'll make a difference in just basically in terms of how much of the extra stuff we get to put in to this facility?
Depends on your definition of extra, but yes. We're focused on the most critical items, but we do hope to get a passenger boarding bridge, the complete baggage handling system that we want to make the ease of travel and flow for passengers.
How much grant money do we need to make all of that stuff a reality?
We applied for 5.7 million this year. If we get all of that, then that funds the entirety of the access road and roundabout, passenger boarding bridge, and the baggage claim system.
Excellent.
I just wanted to say how grateful I was that you're continuing. I know in early conversations, that inclusivity, making sure that our airport was accessible was something that was really important to the, in those early community conversations about the new terminal, and I'm so pleased to see that be a focus as you're continuing forward. I know a lot of families that have maybe family members that have disabilities or challenges really like our smaller airport. I've ridden on the plane with multiple people that have said that to them, that they just, it's more, less daunting to come to our Stillwater Airport for multiple reasons, and if we can make it inclusive and accessible, I think that's a selling point in and of itself for certain types of passengers, which I think we're always so good as a community to be inclusive that way, so I'm pleased to see that. And I, it's so, I appreciate you taking the time to walk us through the renderings. I don't, I know everybody's excited and it's really cool, but like, just the economic impact of having this level of investment in our airport is really tremendous for a community our size. I mean, I don't know if people really under, like, right, we are one of three that have four in our state that have commercial air service, and that's just such an advantage when we think of attracting businesses and attracting residents to our community to have this and in such a well-thought-out space. So thank you for your diligence on it and for presenting.
Yeah, just quick, commend you and Lippert for the work you've done. I don't ever hear under budget. It's really good. Thank you.
Somewhat related question, I, this, actually the Lieutenant Governor was just talking about how they're putting a mural on the side of the current terminal building.
Correct.
Does that mural like plan to be moved to the new, new building? Or is that just going to be a two-year mural? Or is it just going to stay there? Because I guess the building's still going to be there.
The building will be there. I'll show you where on the existing terminal it will be, the open wall there with trashcans in front of it. Poor choice. That's the wall that the mural will be on.
So that'll be there, and that building will, that's not being torn down anytime soon?
Correct. We did make sure they understood that there's potential for that wall to have to come down in three years. That's our estimate, and no, no sooner than three years is the estimate based on the structural stability of that building. We would like to keep the mural and keep the wall intact if we can. We don't yet know what the, what art is going to be selected, but that's coming in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Well, I think it's fantastic. I mean, I'm, it's, you know, as Vice Mayor Jaloski was just saying, I mean, it's such a, you know, this is the front door for a lot of people whose first time coming to Stillwater. Well, this is the building that they see first, and this is the place where they come in, and students that come or visitors that, that show up, you know, this, this is the place that they were going to see first. And with commercial service, you know, it used to be, we worried about people driving into Stillwater on 51 and passing a swine farm that used to be there, and now with commercial service, a lot more people are coming to our town for the first time, coming through this building, and, and we want it to be the absolute best possible, you know, first experience they have here, and this is certainly that. I mean, this is something that I think if you're pulling up on the plane and you're seeing the terminal building, you're going to be instantly impressed with our community, you know, from the first time your, your wheels down here in Stillwater. So it's a, that makes a difference. I mean, it really does. It's not just about, we want pretty things or we like pretty things, but it changes people's perceptions of, of your community, and, and we want to see that. So it's very exciting and a ton of work. We appreciate what's been done so far and understand that there's still a long, long way to go. So thank you. Further questions, comments, or action on the staff's recommendation?
I move approval of staff recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that is approved. Thank you, Kelly. Item seven is resolutions. 7A, Resolution CC-2024-24, official ballot, a resolution of the City of Stillwater, Oklahoma, casting a vote for trustee of the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund to fill the expiring term of at-large trustee representing the entire membership. Kristi, do you want to fill us in on what OKMRF is? I mean, we know.
OKMRF is our 401K provider for our general city employees, and so we have a membership vote. City manager reviewed the current candidates for this year and selected the incumbent, and that is the name that you'll find in the attached resolution.
Any questions, councillors? Action on the resolution.
Motion to adopt resolution number CC-2024-24. Motion to adopt Resolution Number CC-2024-24.
Second?
A motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. Resolution's adopted with a vote of five to zero. Item eight is ordinances. We have three ordinances on second read. First up, ordinance number 3540, an ordinance rezoning tracts of land located at Track Two of 1302 West Lakeview Road and 2323 North Garfield Street from small lot, single-family residential to two-family and multifamily residential. Counselors?
Motion to adopt Ordinance 3540.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, Ordinance 3540 is adopted. Item B is Ordinance 3541, an ordinance rezoning tracts of land located at 1302 West Lakeview Road, Track One, 1412 West Lakeview Road, 1424 West Lakeview Road, 1508 West Lakeview Road, and a tract of land on West Lakeview Road between 1508 and 1412 West Lakeview Road, from small lot, single-family residential to commercial shopping. Counselors?
Motion to adopt Ordinance Number 3541.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, Ordinance 3541 is adopted. And item C is Ordinance 3542, an ordinance rezoning tracts of land located at 424 South Husband Street and 212 West Fifth Avenue from two-family, multifamily residential to commercial business. Counselors?
Move adoption of Ordinance 3542.
Second?
A motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, Ordinance 3542 is adopted. Reports from the officers and the board. Ms. Carley?
Nothing to report.
Ms. Meek?
It's back to school in Stillwater, with Meridian Technology Center beginning August 13th, Stillwater Public Schools beginning August 15th, and Oklahoma State University and Northern Oklahoma College, both on August 19th. There will be an increase of walkers near campus, bus stops, and in crosswalks. Please be mindful when driving. Always stop at crosswalks and let pedestrians pass. Obey school zone speed limits, and do not pass another vehicle in a school zone. Be an attentive driver. Put your cellphone away, and be aware of what and who may be around you and on the road. Additionally, vehicles must stop at least 20 feet before reaching a school bus that has stopped with its red lights flashing. Together, we can ensure our students and other pedestrians arrive to their destinations safely.
Very important reminders. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Please join us tomorrow evening from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Southern Woods Park for Stillwater Police Department's National Night Out. This annual event helps build and strengthen relations with Stillwater families, friends, emergency responders, and community organizations. There will be games, free food, and drinks and fun. We hope to see everyone there.
Has the dunk tank order been established yet? I'm looking at you, City Manager Meek. Counselor Hawkins?
The city is accepting applications to fill a position on the audit committee. The duties of the audit committee include: Recommendation of accounting firm to perform an annual audit; Maintenance of good communications with city staff and independent accountants; Review and evaluation of year-end financial statements and independent accountant's audit reports; Review and evaluation of independent accountant's management letter; Review any reported deficiencies in internal control; And to report to city council as required. The committee is made up of members representing banking, financial institutions, business professionals, and certified public accountants. The current vacancy is that of a businessperson. The term length is three years, and for more information or to apply, go to stillwaterokey.gov/citizenboards. And just a quick plug, it's so important. We, our community is just fantastic at having people that volunteer for these citizen boards, and they are very important. So I encourage anyone who is a businessperson to go ahead and apply for that.
Thank you very much. Counselor Clark?
Please join us this Wednesday, August 7, beginning at 9:00 a.m., for an exciting announcement at Our Daily Bread, located at 701 East 12th Avenue. Our Daily Bread is our regional food and resource center. Not only do they serve Stillwater residents and families, but also those from nearby communities. There will be a surprise announcement that will be exciting and incredibly beneficial for the future of our region. If you cannot join us in person, please consider joining us via Our Daily Bread's Facebook live feed.
Very exciting.
There you go.
Counselor Harden?
The deadline is quickly approaching for students to participate in the Stillwater Art Integrations First Utility Box Art Program. The contest is open to all students from Stillwater Public School, Meridian, OSU, and NOC. All artwork must be submitted by Thursday, August 15, at 5:30 p.m. This year's theme is "It's Electric," to celebrate and educate the community on the importance of electricity and energy-saving efforts. For more information, go to stillwaterokey.gov art. And I will say I've had three or four people reach out to me, say, "Can you do one in my neighborhood?" So there seems to be a demand to have it done. I hope we need to get some art in.
Yeah, I think there's probably, I know there's a lot of demand to see, to have art...
Right.
...on some of those boxes. I hope we're having a lot of submissions, because there's going to be lots of opportunity to put them up.
Yeah.
So get those art submissions in. I will let you know, it's, I mean, as everybody does know, it's already August, which is crazy. That means the Payne County Free Fair is coming up, August 28 through the 31st, the end of this month. The City of Stillwater Departments, including Waste Management, the Public Library, Communications, Public Works, and more, will share a booth near the Emergency Management Fire and Police in the Community Building. Stop by, pick up some swag, and let us know how we can help you and your community. I hope to see you at the Payne County Free Fair, August 28 through the 31st.
If I may, I'd like to throw some kudos out also.
Please.
Stillwater, sorry, not Stillwater, Prairie Arts Center, the director there has told me twice how good the folks have been that have been working on streets and water utilities around there, how nice they've been, how they've taken care of the place. Wanted me to make sure and say thank you for them.
Good deal. Lots of construction happening around the future block they're deploying. Anything further, counselors, on the city council agenda? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the city council. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater City Council is now adjourned. At this time, I will call and order the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting for August 5, 2024. First up, trustees, is the consent docket. Questions, comments, or action?
Motion to approve the consent docket?
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve consent. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the SUA consent docket is approved. Next up is Item 5A, Presentation on a SCADA Master Plan to Consider Approval of a Professional Service Agreement with Corolo.
Good evening, trustees. My name is Chris Humes, and I'm here tonight to talk to you about an exciting project and to ask, to request your approval of the execution of a professional service agreement to develop a SCADA master plan. So I guess the first place I should probably start with is what is SCADA? So SCADA is a supervisor...
Should've started with, how do you pronounce SCADA?
Yes. I wasn't going to call you out, Mayor, but...
Thanks for the heads up, Chris.
So SCADA is Supervisor Control and Data Acquisition. So think of the computer in your car. So as you're driving down the road, the computer in your car is doing a lot of different things. It's keeping track of engine temperature and revolutions to tell you when to change the oil. It's, you know, when you apply the brakes, it's adjusting the analog brakes. And then when you accelerate, it's adjusting the timing and air-fuel mixture control, so you have power. So we have a similar type computer that controls our water gathering, our wastewater treatment plant, and the water treatment plant where we clean up our water, and the distribution of it as well. So SCADA is a very broad term, so it's a lot of things. It's PLCs, it's the programs on those PLCs, it's the software, it's the fiber optic systems that all that data transforms.
All right. You need to define PLC for those of...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Programmable logic controller. So it's a computer. It's just a different name for a computer. So I realize this map is very busy, but, and it's small, but what I want you to take away from it is all of those terms, all those little shapes around town are places where there's at least one PLC programmable logic controller. And on those PLCs, there's software that's running. And in a lot of these places, there's multiple PLCs. And so all that data goes through fiber optic cables, or through radios to a centralized place, whether it's the wastewater treatment plant, or it's the water treatment plant on the north side of town. And then at nights and weekends, all that data goes to one spot. So all, so, it's just, I just want to make the point that SCADA is a very broad term. It encompasses a lot of things. So all of that is SCADA. So this is a picture of some of our SCADA assets in the city. This happens to be, the picture on the left happens to be the control room at the water treatment plant. It's called an HMI, or Human Machine Interface. And so this is how our employees control all those program, all those PLCs around town. It's how they start and stop equipment. It's how they gather information to make decisions on how we clean up our water, or how we manage the wastewater treatment plant. And then the picture on the right is some of that fiber optics infrastructure at the water treatment plant. That's how all the data comes into the water treatment plant, and how all of it leaves, and where it all comes to a central spot. So this infrastructure here was built in the early 2010s, and the infrastructure at the wastewater treatment plant is slightly older. And so we talked about the computer in your car a minute ago, so this is more like a Radio Shack computer. It's old, it's antiquated, it's unstable, and it's not, it's difficult to maintain. So if we were to approve the SCADA master plan, to do a SCADA master plan, this is what a control room would look like when we're done with it, we implement the plan. So this would be what a new control room would look like, either at the water treatment plant or at the wastewater treatment plant.
This looks a lot more like the electric utility.
Yes, yes. It'd be very, very similar to that, instead of the same way, where you've got, where, you know, all the alarms are centralized, you know, where all the information is, and it's just easier to manage data. And so... So why should we care about SCADA? So there's a lot of reasons why we should care about SCADA. So one of them is water quality. So we know that we have some challenges out in distribution with water quality. With a robust SCADA system, we can address those water quality issues in an efficient way. We can reduce our load on our employees. So the operations at the wastewater treatment plant are operated remotely at the water treatment plant, so that can be done efficiently. We'll be able to see all the facilities across town, so we'll minimize callouts, because we'll see what, how things are operating, and it'll be more stable. Reports today, an operator writes down in pencil and paper, or reading either out in the plant, or on the screens there. They transfer that information over to another report, then it gets filled out, and that goes to regulatory agencies. Well, with SCADA, those can all be generated automatically. There's less opportunity for errors. It goes to the supervisor, they forward it on, and so it's just more, more efficient. So power consumption. If we decide we want to have an ESG plan someday, and we want to operate our facilities more efficiently, SCADA can operate all the facilities more efficiently, so we use less electricity and have less emissions go into the atmosphere. We could have digital twins, so we could have, we know how the system's operating today with pressure and pressure loss, and we can have the theoretical model right next to it, and we can compare the two. And so if you see pressures that don't make sense, well, then SCADA would help us ascertain, well, maybe there's a valve that was left open, or a valve left closed, or maybe there's buildup in the pipe. And so we're always operating the system more efficiently. It'll help, you know, we should, today, we should always know how much water we're losing in the call pipeline or in distribution. Well, we can run daily reports to see how much we're losing, both in distribution and the call line. We could run meter reports, so you could say that, you know, yesterday, we got reports from, we got measurement readings from 500 water meters yesterday, and today, there's only 495. Well, then we would know that there's a couple we need to go out there and inspect, so that we're not losing revenue, and we're, you know, charging for all the water that we deliver. Reliability. So right now, we're doing a process going to, for a new ERP system for the city. Well, part of SCADA, is part of that is a maintenance management software. And so part of SCADA is you can export information from our equipment into that, so you can generate work orders on when to go maintain a motor or pump. And so our systems would be more reliable. We'd spend less on deferred maintenance and more on front-end maintenance, which is a much more efficient way to operate our assets. And then just KPIs. We can set up KPIs to show that we're getting more efficient and doing better, so we can generate, you know, dollar per gallon of water made, or whatever KPIs we have. We already talked about lost none and accounted for, and meterings, and those kinds of things. So if we bought into that vision, then we have to have, we have to have a vision of where we want to be in the future. We have to know where we are today, and then everything else is a steps to get from point A to point B. So a SCADA master plan, we'll develop a vision for what we want SCADA to look like in the future. We'll ascertain where we are today, so what infrastructure do we have in place today? And then we'll develop a plan to get there. So it's hardware and software. Right now, we're doing two large projects at the water treatment plant. And so one of the things we can do today, if we implement this plan, is make decisions to standardize on hardware and software, so that we're always not always buying a different one each time. And we can get more efficient, because all the PLCs will be the same. When one goes down, we can go grab another one off the shelf, plug it in, and only train our people on one software program and one set of hardware. We can establish priorities for implementing that plan. So once we come up with our vision, we'll know what it costs, and then we can set up a systematic five-year plan or six-year plan to get there. We'll develop templates and specifications for standards, and then develop a list of recommended SCADA system projects, and then document the overall plan in a SCADA master So the financial funding will be two-thirds from the water fund, a third from the wastewater fund, and we have, we have funds available in both those funds to support this initiative. So any questions on a SCADA master plan?
Trustees?
So I told you I was going to have some questions. You answered some already, so good job on that. My knowledge of SCADA is a decade old, so I'm going to plead ignorance on it, but SCADA used to be just full of holes as far as cyber attacks. Is there, has that been improved, and will this be included in the plan?
So this is, this will be a very collaborative exercise. So I've already, we already had one meeting. I engaged IT. They are very interested in it. So today, we are not connected to the internet, so it would be hard for somebody to hack it today. But in order to take advantage of a lot of these things we've talked about, like exporting engine, our motor hours into our maintenance management system, you have to be connected to the internet. And so it's not if, it's when. So, and so, you know, we've involved IT. They're excited about it. They are a little nervous, but it's just something we have to do. And so is it, is it full, you know, what we can do to make that better is, is, one of the things I envision is being able to be at our desktop here in City Hall, or from your phone, you can see readings. Well, in order to do that to make it safe, it's not, you couldn't make any controls, or you couldn't change anything, but you can just see data. So there's things we can do to make it more robust and more secure.
Okay. And that'll be part of this plan?
Yes, absolutely. Yep. IT, Brad, and Roy, and those guys, Craig, have all been involved in the initial scoping meeting and kind of getting, as part of, you know, the bid for this. It includes cybersecurity and physical security as well.
So when I saw $600,000 for a master plan, I thought, that's a lot of money. Let's flash forward 180 days. This thing's done. You have it in hand. What's the implementation? Do you have the facility? Do you have the people? Do you have the funds to go ahead and begin implementation? Or I just, my concern is, I don't want to pay for a plan and have it sit on the shelf and become obsolete.
Right, right. No, fair concern. So a lot of the, one of the reasons that the cost is, is just ascertaining where we are today. We don't know the PLCs we have out there, we don't know a lot of the infrastructure out there. So we'll have to physically go out there and ascertain that. And we have to do that, because we have to prioritize what needs to be done first, what can wait, what can be later. So that's, that's a lot of the cost there, is just gathering that information. And then it's putting the plan together, coming up with designs of what it would look like, and where we want it to be. it would look like, and where we want it to be. And so, that's, that's the dollar that costs. To implement that plan is probably gonna be eight to 10 million dollars, depending on, you know, what we want to do. But that's, that's why we'd have a stepwise plan of, this is what we do in year one, this is what we do in year two, and year three. But no, we, we cannot wait. Some of these decisions need to be made in the next year, so we're doing the wastewater pump station and the chemicals projects. All of those have hardware and software associated. So, I would rather be very systematic about how we make those decisions, so that we don't regret, make a decision, regret a year or two later, and have to undo some of that. So, some of it is dollars we're already gonna spend anyways. Let's just be systematic and smart about how we're gonna do that.
Well, technology is such a moving target anyway.
It is.
I thoroughly, I thoroughly understand that, but, you know, let's try to, if we're gonna do this, let's try to look ahead and, and jump one implementation away, jump one iteration away, and, and advance, if, if at all possible.
And a lot of it's gonna, and some of it's gonna bring in more revenue, like the meter reports, like the daily report for a stale meter reader out there. That's lost revenue, so that's more revenue coming in. Having the data take better care of our equipment, that's less money we're spending on capital projects. So, some of it actually will save money, and it makes our folks more, more efficient as well.
So, one more question, I'll, I'll let you go. We had a lot of water leaks on Singer Road in the last week or so.
I heard.
Would this have detected that? Would that have been able to get quicker response to, to that situation?
Could. So, we, so what I envision is, we would have different regions of the town. We'd have the northeast zone, which is the higher pressure, and the main zone, and so we would know lost and unaccounted for in all those zones. We'd know what's coming in and what's leaving. So, you're never gonna, it's never, those two numbers are never gonna be exactly the same, what comes in versus what goes out. But water's not a compressible fluid, so we can get pretty accurate, we can get within a couple percent. So, if it's a big one, yes, we should be able to, to see those, but the smaller ones, no. That's, um, you know, we're just, we need, we should always be mindful of what we're losing, and when we see changes, then we should get more curious about why is it changing?
So, I mean, that was a geyser. That was not, not just, that was not a dribble, that was a geyser.
Yeah, fair.
And would we have been able to figure out where it was, and dispatch somebody to take a look at it, or have to wait on citizens to report?
Yeah. Leak, leak detection's getting, that's, you talked about SCADA changing on last ten years, leak detection has too. I mean, there's, if we want to get really good at it, there's acoustic devices you can put on the pipe in different areas, and you can hear them, and so there are things, there is pretty cool leak detection out there.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Chris, could you talk just a little bit about how, you mentioned some of the improvements that we have slated, and how it kind of comes with some of this maybe already as a part of it that would need to be, we need to plan how to integrate those new systems? Obviously, we have a lot of plans for our water infrastructure right now. Can you talk a little bit about, like, how this will help us with that bigger, wider infrastructure plan? Is it, you know, kind of a Lego that we can piece together? As we're funding different parts of the infrastructure, will it allow us to incorporate all the different pieces as we have funding to?
Yeah.
Pay for those pieces?
No, great question. So, part of it's on the hardware side, on the PLC. So, what I envision is, if, if we're consistent on PLCs, then we only have to train our people to work on one PLC. We can have spare parts for that one, and so when they do fail, we can take another one off the shelf. And so, part of it is just making decisions on where we want to standardize on hardware. And so, uh, if we can do that, then that makes us more reliable in the future, um, and helps us be more efficient on making repairs when the, when they go down. On the software side, it's standardizing on the software, so you're always gonna be making changes to software, but we should, we should standardize on how it's all organized. So, today, it's all piecemealed together. Some people, people don't always understand what was done five years ago on the program, so it's really haphazard. Some parts were deleted out, some parts were just left in there. So, this would be a process of how do we upgrade software in the future? And then just being standardized, so that we can do a better job of, of being trained on it, and we all know what's going on in there, and when, and when things do fail, then what's the process for inhibiting alarms, and how you handle equipment that, that's failed? And so, hopefully, that's, that answered your...
It seems a really important step, as we are making these really large investments in our water infrastructure, to have this as a tool in our toolbox.
Absolutely, yes.
And I would assume the plan has, when we have this plan, it will include a, an update schedule for the plan, and an update schedule, an upgrade schedule for our systems, because it seems like sometimes we get in these where you show us pictures from 15 years ago, and it doesn't look like we've done a whole lot in 15 years, right? And how do we keep up on, on top of these sorts of things, so we're not kind of getting another 15 years out and going, oh, well, all that stuff's out of date, now we gotta replace it all?
Yep, yep, fair question. So, it's coming up with the, the body of work, and then what it costs, and then just working with Kristi on what we can afford today, and what we can afford in the next year, and the next year, and then putting a player, a plan to, to get that implemented as quickly as possible. So, it could be that it takes five years, it could be that, that it takes four, or maybe six. I will tell you, there's some parts that are much more, that need much more attention today, like the SCADA system out at the wastewater treatment plant, and at the water treatment plant. Those have much higher needs than, say, like a lift station out around town. Those, um, and so we do, you know, it, it does adjust, it does lend itself to being a scalable or a stepwise process.
Further questions, trustees? Did, I think you gave us a recommendation already.
I, uh, I can read that, yes. Staff recommendation. Motion to authorize the general manager to execute the PSA with Corolo. Authorize total project spend years not to exceed 694300, which includes 10% contingency, and approve the related budget amendment.
Trustees?
I move approval of staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Thank you.
With a vote of five to zero, that staff recommendation is approved. Thank you, Chris. Item 6A is Resolution SUA 2024-6, a resolution of the Stillwater Utilities Authority authorizing implementation of a home energy audit pilot program for electric utility customers. Lauren Smith is here to tell us more about this one.
Good evening, trustees. Lauren Smith, Electric Utility Director. Stillwater Electric Utility is committing to finding innovative ways to support electric conservation and sustainability efforts in our community. Based on internal research, home energy audits are the most appealing incentive to customers. To gauge interest, staff is requesting to create a home energy audit pilot program. The Grand River Dam Authority has approved sponsorship funding of up to $15,000 for the pilot program. If approved, staff will work with a certified contractor to perform the service, and will be billed $325 per inspection, uh, which will pay for approximately 46 audits. Electric utilities customers who, whose homes are 10 years or older are eligible to receive one free onsite home energy audit, and will be scheduled on a first-come, first-come basis until the program funds are exhausted. Our customers will simply visit stillwaterok.gov/energysavings to sign up and schedule the audit with the contractor. The audit will involve a blower door test, inspection of insulation in the attic, evaluation of the HVA system and ductwork, and inspection of the windows. The contractor will prepare a report, uh, for the customer, which will highlight areas of energy loss and recommend, recommended solutions. Upon completion of the pilot program, staff will prepare a report that outlines the interest of the program, and staff recommendations will be brought back to the trustees. If approved tonight, we anticipate a launch date of next Monday, August 12th. And that's if everything goes fine, and I don't see anything that shouldn't, but, uh, wanna give ourselves a week. Don's expert staff have been setting up our website, and our expert staff have been working with the contractors, so everybody is moving forward.
And could you repeat that website one more time?
You bet. That's stillwaterok.gov/energysaving.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
Trustees, questions?
Yeah, Lauren, I, I am delighted to see that we're going to pilot this program. Forty-six customers isn't a lot of customers. I expect this will probably all be gone pretty quickly. Do we have a follow-up plan if this is successful, that we're, how we're going to fund future?
We, we don't at this point. We want to evaluate how popular this is, and then make some internal decisions, and we'll present a report back to you with maybe some recommendations at that time, so...
And this is for any, any home-based customer?
You bet.
So, you, we don't care if it's owner-occupied or rental?
Correct, as long as they're a Stillwater Electric Utility customer.
Okay.
Yeah. And more than 10 years.
The home is older than 10 years.
Home, home is older than 10 years, yeah. And that's primarily because, uh, our research indicated that homes up to 10 years are typically still pretty tight, so there, we want to get the most bang for our buck here, so...
Okay.
And again, this is a pilot program, we could change things as we go along, so we really want to learn, uh, about the customers that are arrested, and see how we can make it better.
Okay. So, this will be totally first-come, first-serve? No indication of low-income versus expensive home? Just first-come, first-served?
First-come, first-served for the pilot, yes.
Mobile homes?
Mobile homes, yep.
Okay. Just curiously, do we have funds available? If somebody finds a, a glaring need for a low-income family, do we have funds available anywhere to help them actually implement these savings?
I will defer to someone...
We have the, uh...
Kristi, Kristi is shaking her head.
Okay, so the, so the, the website will have, uh, recommendations for folks if they need help with trying to fix some of the issues? What is the status of our, our, um, homebuyer assistance program? Has a portion of it that is also available for renovation funding for folks who need help with renovation? I don't know what the status is of that money.
Did we shift that, shift that funding over?
Well, that's correct.
Because nobody was using it?
Yes, every year, we have money set aside in that budget. Unfortunately, that program is not as well utilized, and the first-time homebuyer, or the homebuyer assistance program is more utilized, and so those funds often get shifted, so that we can support more of those, uh, community members that need those funds. When you're needing to do a repair, and having to do a second mortgage to make that repair happen, sometimes, uh, our citizens are able to find other resources in town, uh, so they don't have to put that second mortgage on their home.
Understood.
Yep.
My impression, though, is so many times, these findings are simple things, like weather stripping, and, uh, replacing broken windows and things like that. It's not, not tens of thousands of dollars, it's hundreds of dollars to fix, to really improve the situation.
Correct, and that's what our research indicated as well.
Okay.
Is there anything that would prohibit? I know we have a utility assistance program through, people can donate, pay extra on their utility bills, that could, some of that could be utilized if, for this? If, if there was a low-income need?
Perhaps.
Certainly sounds like something we can talk about with the pilot, like if this goes, you know, it would be interesting to see what comes out of this, in terms of the reporting, and, you know, what people have to say about, well, gosh, you just told me I need $15,000 worth of repairs, and I can't do that, and we can kind of figure out what the...
Correct, yeah. You know, again, that's what the whole pilot report is, kind of see what information we get coming in, and what we have to do to navigate.
There are programs with the Department of Energy. I know a lot of the community action agencies across the state use, uh, Department of Energy funding for weatherization, for, particularly for low incomes, so it might be something for us to look at.
So, shifting gears a little bit, question-wise, I, I see in the sample form, I think, that we got as part of this, there's a, one specific contractor that's gonna handle going out and do these, is that, like, gonna be the case? Well, why is there just one? Is this a person that we know? Is this somebody that Grand River Dam has used before? Or how do we get one contractor on this?
So, it's, it's a local, uh, it's a contractor that will actually come to Stillwater and, and, and perform these. Uh, we've actually borrowed some information from some surrounding utilities, to see who they've used in the past, and this contractor becomes very, uh, highly recommended, and...
Good.
Yeah.
Excellent. Is this person going to be making recommendations for him to come back and make, uh, lots of expensive repairs to the folks' homes?
No, 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 I'm not, not aware of that at all, right? He, he supplies a very detailed report, or this contractor does, to them to, for them to make changes, yeah.
But not going back and, and saying, oh, I can do that for you, and here, I mean, I, I would, my concern would just be, we don't want it for folks to feel like somebody's using the city's, you know, system here to kind of come out and sell them...
Correct.
...repairs to their house. So, I hope we will, we'll be keeping an eye and making sure that we don't have...
That's certainly not the intent, and, and we will certainly be keeping an eye on that.
Okay, thank you. Trustees, any further questions? What's your recommendation for us? I guess your recommendation is that we approve the, uh, resolution.
Yes, sir.
Trustees?
Motion to approve Resolution SUA 2024-6.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, Resolution SUA 2024-6 is approved. Looking forward to seeing how that goes. That's a, again, I think, a great, um, initiative to help folks figure out how to save some money on their electric bills, so I'm hopeful that'll be a, a positive thing. Any reports from the officers of the board? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
With a motion and a second to adjourn SUA, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, Stillwater Economic Util, Stillwater Utilities Authority is adjourned. At this time, I'll call to order the Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting for August 5th, 2024. Trustees, motion on the consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket?
Second.
Motion and a second, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. General Orders 5A is a Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Quarterly Report. From Carrie Moore.
Carrie Moore. Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna open this up. You guys got the full-length report, um, and I'm just gonna give you the highlight reel, because there was a lot in that full report. Lots to be proud of. Um, we had one company tour that came. The most exciting, um, outcome of that company tour was, they intentionally requested that a key employee, they were trying to recruit to move and relocate their family here, join them. The, it went so well, um, we created a family resource packet that he accepted the job, and we're actually being able to duplicate that family resource packet for other employers that have recruited new, um, employees to our community. So, that was an awesome outcome. We have had five national site selections, um, or real estate executives contact us to discuss developmental opportunities. This created an opportunity for me to be able to uncover a lot of their process, um, and identify key components of our marketing structure and our marketing plan, which goes into what I'm gonna talk about a little bit more with our Grow Stillwater website. Commerce place update. We are currently in active negotiations with Newmark to help us market to specific target industries. So, as we have, um, discovered that buildings and companies like ASCO have large space available to lease, we uncovered that we could be really smart in how we market that commerce place, and utilize their lease option as an expand to grow, or, um, develop a, what I like to call, um, our, oh goodness, ideal company profile, is what I'm calling that. So, um, what companies, where do we have gaps in what we have, and how can we attract someone utilizing those two things in conjunction that would support the industries that we already have here? We submitted five out of 13 RFC, RFP responses that we had opportunities to go into. Any questions on that before I move on? No? Okay. Marketing materials. I'm super excited about this. This is the fun part. It's the creative, and the exciting, and the highlights. Um, we are working with the OSU Student Media Department to develop a two-minute, um, recruitment video. This will be a tool that people can use when they go to trade shows, our large employers. Also, in our conversations, discovered that they're like, hey, I go to these trade shows, and I'm trying to recruit key employees, um, key staff, and I have nothing to tell them why Stillwater's amazing. So, being able to put this video together that we can market, not only on social media, but can be reworked to also include a commercial, um, is gonna be a huge tool and a huge asset. We hope to have that for you guys to view by December 16th, and then to officially air it by January 1st. Um, I did meet with the website designer and the city media team. We are changing directions of the Grow Stillwater website. Um, in my conversations with our site selectors, and people that we're working with in relocating and recruiting, our website at the time was, made sense, if you understood Stillwater, but it was not necessarily easy to navigate, or fully made sense to people that didn't know Stillwater. And so, we're reworking that. We've also decided that instead of completely building a brand-new website, we had a really great foundation, and we're going to just improve that and combine what was started and what we have. And so, hopefully, we will have that out a lot sooner. And I plan to have a project timeline to present in our next quarterly meeting, if not a completed project. Printed materials, this is going to go along with our website and as we develop other things so that the branding all is cohesive and it all makes sense and it's up to date. Any questions on marketing materials so far? Okay. Business retention and expansion. I keep saying everything's my favorite. It turns out, I really like all of it. So, we have had, we completed four top-10 employer surveys in the last quarter, two or three primary businesses and three expansion projects. Some of the highlights that came from that is that we were able to support Stillwater Milling Company in their two-plus-million-dollar improvement project by sponsoring them to receive a $500,000 grant. So, that was approved. They did receive it, which was really exciting. Submitted a side act application on behalf of Project Verde in the process of also helping them do federal grant stacking. And so, if all of that comes to fruition, it will result in over a million dollars in project funding. We've also started a business needs and incentive analysis partnership program in partnership with Meridian and the Oklahoma Finance Authority. So, this is going to help us identify gaps in employer needs and also community quality of life, things that will help attract employees and businesses. We are also doing a National Manufacturing Day event and tour out at National Standard. This has not been done in the past, and it's going to be really exciting. We're inviting all of the manufacturers throughout the state, especially those that utilize welding wire. That's one of the products that they offer. And understanding that they, they've changed their market, the way that they go to market, they've changed the way that they develop product and then the way they manufacture it. So, getting to highlight that on National Manufacturing Day encourage everybody to come to town and also hopefully stay because there's a home game the next day.
When is it?
It will be on November 4th. And then, we have also partnered... Sorry?
That's homecoming.
Yes.
Good time.
It'll be, it'll be a good time. We partnered with DHS. So, the other area that we've run into is that unemployment is so low that people are having a hard time finding employable candidates. DHS has a program that they call their Work Experience Program. It's a phenomenal program. It started pre-COVID, kind of got put on hold. Then they looked back, and they were like, "Wow, we've had really great results from the people that were in this beginning. We're going to revamp it." So, we're actually hosting an opportunity for our local employers to come learn about this program and how they can help take people that really want to be in the workforce but maybe have never been exposed to an adult that showed up to work every day or that set an alarm or learned how to dress or do customer service or any of those things. So, we're taking people that want to be in the workforce and giving them opportunities to become dependable employees. Any questions on this? Okay. Business recruitment. So, I registered to attend a site selection event at Globe Life Field this month, which I'm super excited about because the selection companies there are aligning with these companies that we believe we're going to want to be targeting, so I'll have some good questions for them. We are sponsoring and attending the Select Oklahoma Conference, which is the economic development conference for the state of Oklahoma, which is going to be the 26th and 27th. And most exciting is that we have officially been awarded Project Verde, which will bring 75 new jobs, an annual payroll of over $5 million, and a capital investment of over $82 million.
Yay, that is exciting.
It's very exciting.
It's really exciting. Are you providing more information about that?
No, not yet.
Okay.
Not yet. They've asked us not to yet, so we're respecting that.
Like even the location of that one?
Yeah, we can. That one, that's the old Armstrong facility.
Yes, this is the Armstrong facility that will be reanimated and...
Yes.
New jobs, new money. That's fantastic.
Great community partners. Any other questions so far? No? Okay. And that's, that's it. That was the highlight.
Thank you, Carrie. Trustees? Comments, questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Carrie, on the project responses report, there are a couple of examples, even as recently as last month, where it says there was no response provided. Is, does that mean truly nothing was sent back, or what does no response mean?
Yeah, so no response means, the way that those work when you do an RFP, if you do not have what they are specifically asking for to be able to participate in that program, you do not send them additional material because it's gone through, it's like a funnel. So, it's not actually going to the company. It goes to the state. They review it. They put it together on another level, and then it goes to the company from there. So, us just sending something would create work and create conflict with our partners.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'll say, Carrie, I've been invited to go to College of Engineering next week.
Yes.
They have 20 new faculty members, and the dean asked me to come talk about Stillwater and what they need to know. And Carrie already has her recruiting package ready to go. We're going to rework that and go, "Wow, I'm with Stillwater."
Yeah.
So, they will have already been here. I understand there's about 20 new faculty members. Some married, some have children. Eighty percent, I've been told, are not American, so maybe not English as a first language. It'll be interesting to see what kind of questions we have about Stillwater, but they will already be here, so. We'll see what we come up with. Looking forward to it. Thanks for helping there.
Thank you.
Seems like you're getting up to speed, hitting the ground running.
Hitting the ground running.
Good.
I don't like to take my time on anything.
I'm excited to see the visits to the conferences down at Globe Life and talk with those site selectors, and then the Oklahoma Conference as well. Goes without saying, but if you need additional material or, you know, input from us on any of those conferences or stuff that you need to be able to take or information you need to take with you, just let us know. We'll make sure you have what you need.
Absolutely, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Carrie.
Thank you.
Any reports from the officers of the board? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn SITA. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, Stillwater Economic Development Authority is now adjourned, and that concludes our meetings for this evening.